All right. Good evening. Today is April 4th, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie Schools Board of Education. This is a work session, so we haven't done this in a while, but work sessions, all it means is we'll discuss topics. There'll be no voting. There'll be no action taken where normally it's a business meeting where we vote and we take actions. Tonight, it's just discussion on the strategic plan and no voting. So with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Deborah Coe?
Present.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here's the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Deborah Coe?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have our only agenda item is a strategic planning discussion. It's going to be facilitated by Dr. Dawn Weiss. So please take the podium if you're ready.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to start up here and then I'm going to move to back there because my goal is just for you all to talk at me. So that's the, that's the direction I'm headed, just so you know. And then if that's, if that complicates anything in terms of recording and such, bring me back, but it'll be easier if I can take notes sitting over there, if that's okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for having me. I want to talk very, very little, but I'll sort of set the stage for, for why I'm here and then what's happening tonight and then also tomorrow. So let me start with tomorrow. Tomorrow I'll be working with the leadership team on, on more of the strategic plan, moving into the next strategic plan. But as I was talking with them about that, I said, you know, let, we said, let's get board input so that we have an idea of where the board is, where the leadership team is, everything then is all in sync. Feel free to interrupt me. I'm very, very comfortable being interrupted. So if I just start going on and on. Let me do a brief introduction of me, so you know who I am. Several people said, oh, are you from here? I am not. I am from Virginia, not Loudoun County. You'll be happy to hear. So I, I, although I'll share, well, this is getting ahead on my agenda, I have spent a lot of time in Columbus the last four years because my daughter is graduating from Kenyon in May and I have finished my last tuition payment. I'm very pleased to say. So my background undergraduate, I actually studied grade six to 12 education. And in my student teaching, recognized very quickly that I was not cut out to be a teacher. And I ended up working in higher education. I spent 20 years in higher education, ultimately as a vice president at a university, and then ended up working for a consulting firm, worked with that consulting firm for 10 years, and then realized, as I'm kind of nearing my own transition in my career, I thought, you know, I'm just going to do this on my own for a couple of years and then I'm hanging up the saddle. When I, when I completed my doctoral work, it was specifically focused on strategy and strategy excellence in organizations. So I can talk about strategic planning like all day. I love it because it is truly, and Krista has actually heard me say this, I think it's the most empowering thing organizations can do. It's, it charts the course and that's really what the, what we're doing tonight and then also tomorrow. From a board perspective, I have served as the staff liaison to a board committee. I have been a board member. I have been a board chair. I've, I advise several different boards now where I'm sort of a long-term contract employee advising board. So I've spent a lot of times with boards and from each different angle. And so I try to bring that to the work that I do. The majority of the work that I do now is not this, although I love this. This is one of my favorite things to do. I advise a trade association on its research. I do a lot of litigation defense expert work. So for example, if you're sued, I'm a person who gets called to help. I'm, I'm normally on that defense side. And then long-term kind of contractual advising with boards. So that's my background. I hope that gives enough of a precursor as to why I'm here. Any questions? Okay, good. I didn't want to spend too much time on that. Okay, so boards. And this is what I'm going to ask of you all. And if you hear me, if you hear me very much once I sit down, it's because I think we're starting to drift. When we think about boards, boards are in the governance role and your staff team is in that operational role. And so what I'm, it, what I have, what I have noticed, both as a board member and as somebody working with boards, I think it is a very natural thing for boards to move into the operational, the operations, right? Because that's, that's where all the sausage is made, right? And the challenge of being a board member is trying to elevate that thinking and really focus on how the mechanics run at that higher level so that it empowers that staff team to then actualize that larger vision. So as, as you all are thinking about the questions I'll ask, I want you to be thinking governance versus, and they really are a versus, operations. And the analogy that I often will use when I'm talking to boards is if a board is spending too much time in operations, it's not doing the governance part of its job, right? So we really do need to think about what is that long-term vision to move the school, move the school system as we think about the next three years, the next five years, the next 10 years. The work of a board, these are things that I know, know that you all know, but I'm going to say them so that make sure we're all in the same place. Supervision, evaluation, hiring, firing of the superintendent and collaboratively, collaboratively working with leadership on long-term strategy. Those are the principal roles of a board. And so that's where I'm hoping we're going to, it's, it's not the hiring and firing of your superintendent that I'm hoping we're doing tonight. I hope that we're focusing on the, I know, right, on, on the collaborative leadership. So, but that's why this session is so important, right? Having this tonight as the precursor to the staff discussions tomorrow, this, this is what propels an organization forward. At least that's, that's my hope. So does that all make sense? Any questions, any thoughts on that first part of what I've shared?
Do you facilitate the staff discussions tomorrow?
Yes, yes, sir. Yep, tomorrow, tomorrow morning until we finish. Yep. Any other questions?
That's with our, just with the leadership team.
Sure.
Yeah.
I guess it's more of a comment than a, than a question. I think we need to think of it two ways. Like if the board isn't too much of the operational issues, either we're getting outside our lane or we're filling a void that the leadership team isn't filling, right? So it goes both ways.
Absolutely.
And when we get sucked into operational issues.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Yeah. Okay, well, let me tell you what I'm going to be doing with them tomorrow. So you'll, you'll know what happens with what we'll call your work product, what your work product. We are going to be doing the same things tonight and then again tomorrow. We're going to focus on each of the strategic initiatives. So let's see. Do you, do you have copy of the, yeah, if we could turn, yeah, we have this there. Turn that. And I'm assuming that, that that looks very, very familiar. But that, that is what we're going to be focusing on and going through at the strategic initiative level. So, and I'm sure you all know this, it's your, it's your, it's your plan, but the, the wording that's in the, in the color circle, we're going to be focusing on each of those. And I'm going to ask you to give feedback on what you've seen as big successes, if you've seen where there needs to be continued work in any of those areas. And most importantly, as we think about the next three to five to 10 years, what do you see as points where we, that need to be emphasized moving into the next plan? And that's what we're doing. And then tomorrow, what I'll do tonight is I'm going to type all this up. And then, although a lot of the folks are here, which I'm grateful that you're hearing this, I'll be typing this up and then we'll be integrating your work into their work tomorrow. And that's pretty much the process. You know, my, I often make a joke about, well, there's a lot of things that I think are funny about strategic planning. I'm the only one. But I, I think a lot of people make strategic planning too difficult. Strategic planning is simply thinking about where we want to go, right, and being strategic about it. And my dad, my dad was a rocket scientist, literally a rocket scientist. And people will say, well, you know, it's, it's not rocket science. And it isn't. But then again, a rocket scientist, my dad would be horrible at this, you know? And so that's, so it's not that it's just simply an easy thing to do unless you make yourself move to kind of that higher level of thinking and to, you know, to fulfill that, kind of that bored component of the conversation. So that's my intro. I appreciate being here and I'm going to go sit over here and look at your plan and ask you questions and ask you to reflect, and that's what we're doing. Any, any questions about tonight and how this fits into tomorrow? Awesome. Then we're going to start with, I have to look closely. Why don't we start with students and stakeholders? And I think you've got, you've got a memo that gives where things happen, where things have been and some identified areas for further growth interested in your perspectives. And I'm just going to take notes. I'm not going to record names unless I'm just going to take notes.
Did I miss the question? What's the question to ask?
What you, thank you. What you see as, there are a couple of questions. Great successes on each of these areas, where you see need for further growth and where you see things as you think about three years, five years, 10 years? Can you answer any of those questions?
It's kind of within regards to the, to the strategic objectives of alleviating barriers to learning, expanding community engagement relationships and promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. If, if indeed there's something else that we want to consider as opposed, as an objective related to students and stakeholders or, you know, alleviating barriers to learning will always be evolving, will always have barriers, there may, there may be new barriers, whatever, you know, coming out of the pandemics and new pandemic was a new barrier that we didn't, we didn't plan on. We made this plan way back when. You know, are there other opportunities to expand community engagement that you value? You know, I don't think, you know, that promoting a culture of inclusive excellence is another one that's ongoing. We're not there yet, but are there ways we can, those things we still value. That's, again, with two new board members, we created this plan years ago, so that's kind of where the discussion should, should head.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's perfect. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, so I'll jump in. I mean, as, as a new board member, I, I can't speak for the past as much, right? Certainly have been a parent in the district for a while and have seen how the schools play out. If we start to think about, you know, what is working and what has been a success, certainly the, the district's focus on inclusivity and inclusive excellence has been obvious, right? It's, it's explained in everything we do. We have numerous events that go out via email. We have numerous events in schools. We have the, the One Community Conference. We have the Days of Service. We have all of these things that are being promoted significantly and that's great. And that's something we should continue to do, right? And we can't, that, that is not something to me that you just check the box and say we're done. It is something you have to continue to focus on over time and, and do it proactively. I mean, one of the things, especially as I've talked with, with parents in the district, is being really thoughtful about proactivity, anticipating needs and then being inclusive. Once we've already, we, we start to think about what people are going to need before they even say it. There are always going to be issues we miss. There's always going to be a new circumstance that we haven't thought of. But there are issues that happen every year and there are things that we're going to figure out that we, that we need to do. And so having that proactive mindset in doing it and, and never being satisfied with where we are, but continuing to do it. I think the culture of inclusive excellence, seeing the results that we've gotten from that, to me, it can be expanded over to a culture of mental health, especially of the, coming out of the pandemic. When you ask about three-year, five-year, the next three to five, 10 years, we are going to be seeing the future of the kids that came into our schools in the, in the pandemic. And we started to see how it's affecting them, but we're going to continue to see that play out from both a learning development, a social development, an emotional development, a mental health development. If we aren't focused on not just providing the supports, which we do and we do very well, but then evaluating how they're working and how they're playing out over time, we're going to be doing a disservice to our students. So as I think about how that, how much we have made that a priority for inclusivity, for equity, for diversity, I think we've got to do the same thing for mental health. That's the thing that worries me more than anything else over the next, for as difficult as it is for kids, growing up today anyway, and then you throw in all of the issues with the pandemic, that's an amazing area we've got to focus on. The community engagement, again, we've done a great job. We have all sorts of ways that we're working with community from, you know, the coffee chats that Mark does to, you know, the parent academies, to all of the outreach there. I think we can do more there as well. I think that there are ways to engage the community for work groups and for other things. Just sitting down and talking with parents and hearing where they are. There are a lot of times where people say, I know that there are avenues, but I wasn't, I wasn't ready to do this or do that, but I'm so glad that someone wants to talk to me, right? And I know how much work all the leadership team puts into that and how much work our teachers put into that. Showing that focus and showing that we're serious about it is essential to maintaining those community relations. So I think, good job. Let's continue to go further there. The barriers to learning, I think we'll talk about that in the learning and organizational development section as well. But I think the pandemic is going to be creating a lot of barriers to learning as we've seen people, you know, originally miss some time, instructional time, the one-on-one time, and how we start to deal with that as well as how it's, it's impacting them. So, you know, I, I think there's work to be done there as well.
Great. So if you have any question about what we're doing, that was, that was perfect. That was great feedback. Thank you. Any feedback to his feedback?
I'll just offer maybe two comments. So one is we shouldn't have an expectation that we're going to sit here to rewrite the entire strategic plan. Right? The strategic plan should be, should be a framework from which it lasts, you know, has some durability. Things will come in and out of the plan from time to time depending on environmental issues, other things. But to sit here and rewrite the whole plan, again, maybe not setting the appropriate expectation with the community that we're not here to rewrite the plan, but update, refine, revise, et cetera. And so to that end, you know, in this, in this bucket of the circle, we just need to think about the whole community engagement, parent engagement model. It's been a tough two years, right, with kind of community engagement. And are there things that we should be doing, things we should be thinking about to change the way we engage, we, the board, we, the administration, you know, engage with the community and try to get it, you know, a more positive environment?
Well, I just wanted to-
I'm reading your non-verbal and it looks like you were ready.
Well, it was about culture of inclusive excellence. And I know one of the initiatives that administration took was to identify students that maybe weren't going to take AP classes, you know, to look for all students to be taking those classes. And I think the same thing has been done with career and technical, where teachers are reaching out to students and presenting them with options. I also sit on the career center board, so I, I still feel like there's a general lack of information about all the things that are available to our students. Like, you know, parents still have that, well, I don't want them to go to the tech center, you know, and there's a lot more to the tech center than, than parents might think. Same thing with STEM, you know, we're, we're at a STEM capacity and we want to maybe revisit that whole initiative because it seems to be very popular. We're limited on space. So those were some things that I appreciated, you know, direct initiatives for students at all ends of this spectrum of learning and ethnicities, opportunities for them, really, really reaching out and, you know, letting kids know what their options are. So that's something I appreciate and I don't want to go away.
Anyone down here? Comments, input, feedback?
I think in the limited time I've been on the board and seeing how things work, I'm very thankful that you did students and stakeholders first in our discussion because if we run out of time and we only talk about students and stakeholders, that's, that's why I know that all of us are here because that's what drives our work. Yes, inclusive excellence, yes, community engagement, but I think the overarching strength in this category of students and stakeholders is that we're very critical when we, when we miss the mark and we press really hard to keep getting better. And that's hard in a district like ours that has such high levels of achievement that we're still growing kids academically. I think that's a huge strength of our district. Inclusive excellence is very important to me. And I know it is for everybody, but it is for me because I work with so many kids that maybe don't fit in in, in, in certain ways and we want them to. We want them to feel like Olentangie is our home, is their home. And we have a huge population of students that live in poverty, even though you might not see that, that's important to me. And our students that learn differently, that's important to me. We've had students speaking the last few weeks. It's important to me that they feel like this is their home and that this is, they, they can thrive here. I know those are kind of on the list, but those are the strengths. I, I think I'm excited about how we're going to continue to improve, to engage the, our community, especially those who are critical of our work because we can learn from what anybody has to say about what we're doing. Students and stakeholders, really glad we started with this.
And when you say, I wanted to see if-
For sure.
If what you touched on, when you say involve those who are critical, does that go back to Grant's comment of continuing to reach out and broaden that outreach? Or are there additional ways that you seek to engage?
Yes and yes. There's people that I've spoken with that I disagree fundamentally on, on their approach to what we're doing, but I still learn from them. And one of the things Mr. Lester's done is really model how to listen to folks and folks that we might disagree with. And we've had opportunities to spend time with them in different, in different settings. And that's really important because people, even if they're, even if we don't accept what their recommendation is, they deserve to be heard. And that's a big deal. It's not just talk. It's, it's really what we need to be about. And I know that's a strength, but we also can get better at it.
But a key is, you know, people disagree oftentimes on their positions, right, on a particular issue. You and I, any number of things that we may sit down with and, you know, I like this on my pizza, you like that, right? We may disagree, but we'll have fundamental interests in common. Finding ways to get to those interests, to be able to, to get past what the position is and identify where our shared values are allows us to then make decisions that are in alignment with that, that people can appreciate, even if on a particular issue, there's disagreement. And I think we've done a good job of that. I mean, I honestly do. And, and as I've seen some of the decision-making processes coming in and, and seeing the ways that we've taken things to heart, even if an individual, you know, may disagree with a specific decision, they feel like, all right, we're, we're headed in the right direction on this, even if this, this particular battle we lost, the, the way that we're heading this way is good. But we can't lose that focus of wanting to get to those interests.
I know this is just really the board's discussion, but just, just so we're, you know, again, as you guys are the, are the ones setting the direction of, of the district, you know, voted to represent the district and setting these, these big picture, the vision, where, you know, where we're trying to go and where, where then we're as administrators, you know, steering the ship on the course that you've given us. You know, what I just heard is loud and clear that this goal of promoting a culture of inclusive excellence is, is very important to all the board members. And, and that, that's where it matters for us then to know that we have then the ability to chart the course to meet that goal. And it's, it's very important that the community, because there are people in the community that don't want us to go down this path. And that's a common, which, which again, and I also heard that, you know, a lot of times it comes down to, you know, we've heard that the, the pushback about some of the racial issues and some of the gender identity or, or, you know, issues related to those kind of things. But there are more to this promoting culture of inclusive excellence than just those two issues. They, they've become the hot buttons one. You know, inclusivity about, Jack and I received a very strong email about inclusion with kids, especially with kids who learn differently, who are, you know, so, so it's important that we can look at now, then for us then, okay, so how do we expand on this and strengthen the, the work plans behind those goals? So just so, I just wanted to give you an example of what your discussion is now churning for all of us because I'm seeing these heads nodding out here like, all right, we got it. We're going. Sorry, anyone?
No, that was awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, no ambiguity on this end. Absolutely.
I'm not checking it off yet. I watched you do a checkmark. I'm not going to move this thing. No, just on the, on the one piece. Good. Anything else on students and stakeholders? Appreciate it. You bring it. I've heard mental health and learning differences as sort of subsets in that area. And anything else you think needs, needs to come up that, that hasn't been discussed?
No, listening, one thing I, I, that comes to my mind was when it comes to understanding what is meant by culture of inclusive excellence and is, how are we defining it? Are we educating the community to say, this is exactly how we're viewing it and it's out in the forefront? So when you have that education there, you know, we see it, but do we have that, are we educating? Do we put it up front like, this is what we mean? Does it just mean it's a racial? Or it doesn't just mean this is for transgender or things like that? This is what falls underneath this. And I think that kind of would help with understanding and people seeing the entire picture versus just this little window that might be a hotspot or, you know, a hot button I need. So I think that's one thing that, you know, the education piece has to be upfront so that the community knows. I mean, everyone knows and we're always on the same page on what this exactly means.
I think that's a great point because until we define it, they're going to define it for us.
Right.
Yeah.
And picking up-
The community, people will make assumptions about what it is and what it isn't. We just need to be- We just need to be crystal clear to Dr. Wise's point on what it is and what we mean when we say it.
Yeah. And measuring if we're doing what we think we're doing, right? Is knowing exactly what this means and then continually reevaluate, you know, is this way that we're doing this getting to that end? Because it can't just be a paper inclusivity. It has to be actually in practice and making sure that it's working.
Right.
Yeah. That's a great point.
We could have a whole work session on that alone.
Yeah.
That's right.
We could.
Now, are we ready to move on to the next one?
Okay, very good. Resource stewardship.
So I'll just start. So this is one I think that, you know, she's got a great story, right, in terms of cost per pupil and, you know, the value of having a school district that's at scale, right? So we're optimizing the resources of the community in terms of how we run the district. It's a bit of a tweak, but I think it's an important tweak. We talk about maximize investments in revenue. It's probably going to be closer to optimize because there are so many constraints on what Emily can and can't do with the investments, right? And you want to do it on a risk-adjusted basis, right? You don't want to take a bunch of speculative bets to maximize. And really what we're trying to say is we're going to balance risk and reward. We're going to, you know, invest within the parameters that the state of Ohio has set for us in terms of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. But, you know, we're going to actively pursue that portfolio and actively pursue making sure that, you know, both investments and revenue are operating the way we need them to operate. But in terms of fiscal responsibility and transparency, I mean, we get award after award. We're redoing the financial reporting package. So I think we've got a really good track record there.
Thank you. I think there's a really clear understanding of exactly what our assets are in managing them. It seems to be the number that everybody knows. Can I do this? What do I have to give up? I mean, it's always being managed.
That's really like, Jeff Gordon does a great job with, we have a 30-year capital plan. I mean, who has that, right? Where, you know, building by building, when do we need a chiller, when we need a roof, when we need asphalt, when we need all that stuff. So I think it's probably a pain for Jeff to do it out that far, but it helps significantly with long-term financial planning.
Yeah, I mean, we, I have been nothing but continually impressed by just how professional and thoughtful and how well this goal has been met in everything that I've read. I think the issue for me more than anything else is thinking about three, five, 10 years on this goal because of the issues we're going to be seeing around population growth, about building needs and our ability to do that. That's where a lot of this plan is going to be taking effect, as we've seen on the facilities committee, where our needs for new schools are lining up with a period of time where construction costs are rising exponentially, where land costs are rising exponentially, and where people are moving into the district so swiftly that it's forcing us to consider this sooner than may be expected originally as we've seen that growth. So to me, it's, everything here we're doing is great. It's the next three to five to 10 years with the need for new schools is going to present a significant challenge for how we do all of that, how we meet our obligations to the community and how proactive we need to be in both procuring, you know, all the things that we're going to need for all of that stuff to continue to optimize what we're spending in that regard, because those costs are just going crazy right now. I mean, it's just sky high.
It's not fun being at facilities, is it?
Yeah.
It's a little too much reality.
Yeah, it is. It is so boring. It is so boring, for sure.
Is that me or Dr.?
Oh, I have it.
Go ahead. It might come later.
So, and revenue. And revenue. If there's one thing that, and I guess people probably sick about hearing about our efforts to maximize our revenue that we get because we've been ignored by the state and it's not right, it's not fair to the folks in our district. And I'm thrilled that the district continues to exert a maximum effort to maximize revenue. How long do we have tonight on how important that is? Our families are- Yeah, I mean, if there's one thing that I hear from folks is that they want to make sure we're getting a fair shake. And funding in Ohio is about as complicated as it can possibly be, but the second thing is with the committee, audit and accountability. Just, I think, have we had one or two meetings so far?
We've had two.
So impressed with the skill level in our community of people that volunteer their time to help fine tune how we present our financial picture to the community, because the folks that live in our community understand financial things that are presented. So our challenge is to continue to present in a way that makes sense. And the folks on that committee were, I mean, it was a good press to get everything in a way that we can see, and I mean, we're talking about ways so that, I mean, folks can already see every expenditure, which is a good thing, but just not accepting where we're at, continuing to get better. And manage assets wisely, I think that's an unbelievable strength of our district. When I go to into schools, they look pristine. And I go to a lot of different buildings, a lot of different grounds for sports and stuff, and I'm proud of our district and how we take care of stuff. It's the right thing to do to steward resources because when we're all gone, we're going to leave these buildings to a new group of folks and we're going to leave them in a better way than we found them. And that's a big deal.
Yeah, it is important, I mean, that is very important for that planning purposes and managing enrollment growth because the need for buildings is going to probably come before the need, hopefully if we get more state funding, the need for operating costs should be, you know, a huge win. But I appreciate the comment about the 30-year plan, and we look at it in terms of 10-year plan, a 20-year plan and a 30-year plan, because it's setting the stage for the fact that as we continue to grow and age, we will need more operating dollars or permanent improvement dollars to continue to address our needs. In 2016, it was the first time we ever added a PI and we added to it, and the plan has been to add to it incrementally, and older districts have that. So, you know, those are the kind of conversations I think that are setting the stage for the future, and it's important to continue to tell that story to the community. Again, most people get it when they drive around and see all the building, to know that we're going to probably need a new building here soon, sooner rather than later, but-
But I think they also appreciate the explanation of the difference in funding and how it's not just operating five-year forecast dollars, that we're looking at bond, we're looking at permanent improvement, that there's different funding set up to maintain and be specific and poignant about those pieces and parts so that their kids coming through still have the same quality of building that they experience now and, you know, that they are maintained and kept up. I think that's important to the community when we have had those conversations.
Awesome. Anything else for this one? This was great. Okay, let's move down. Let's move down to the green. Yeah, I think the learning and organizational development.
So this is one where obviously to establish our brand identity can come off.
You can come off.
If that work is done, I think.
We can be consistent to our brand. We can be consistent to our brand.
Yes. So I don't know how to phrase this correctly, but I'll just try to say it. I think that could be work to be done around consistent delivery of curriculum so that, you know, within reason, a student at Orange High School should get a similar academic and curricular experience at Liberty, at Oral Tangi, and I'll say it, you know, kind of, get the rogue curriculum out and make sure that the staff is adhering to the curriculum policy more consistently than I think we've seen over the last two years.
Especially reading curriculum. Just saying. Especially reading, that's my favorite topic.
Teachers need degrees of autonomy to teach the curriculum how they think it's best, provided it's still consistent with our policy.
Now, that's where being clear on our policy is helpful and how, and some of the stuff that we've started to see, you know, around the literature selection processes and the good work that's going on there. It's, I think your point is right on that the teachers have to have autonomy. It can't just be on this day, everybody in the district is learning-
It can't be prescriptive.
That's right.
Right.
But there has to be, we have to be sure that we're putting a lot of thought toward our processes, that we're doing it in a way that ensures that we're continuing to provide that high level of education and we're doing it consistently. And then once we've set those processes, once all the good work that all of the team is doing and all of the building leadership is doing, to make sure that those standards are out there, that we're following them and that people understand that they're things we're serious about and we're serious about them because they're best practices. Yeah, I completely agree.
I tried to capture that. Tell me if I'm capturing this right. Balancing autonomy with direction.
We should give them degrees of freedom, provided they stay within the policy. And once they go beyond the policy, they give up their degrees of freedom.
If I could suggest something to, we're saying we take the brand identity out, right? So if I could suggest something to take its place, our value identity, right? So what are our value identity?
Value identity.
What are our values as a district? And how do we lay those out in a way, and this goes to, I think, everybody's point of, you know, what is it we're saying and what does that mean? And what are the values that we're operating from so that we can anchor back to those? And that's what we do, right? I mean, I see the way that people are responding to questions that we get, and we're always answering to that. But to say, this is something that's important to us as a district, is to be very clear about what our values are, and that's what every decision is going to anchor back to. I don't know if that goes in leadership and organizational development or learning and organizational development or somewhere else, but being very upfront about our values and making it a priority to continue to talk about them, to me, is essential.
Seems like we're going in order on all of these. That's okay. We always sit-
I'm not noticing, so it's-
We sit in the same places every week, we're every two weeks, so the order's fine. Yeah, I mean, that balance is always hard to do. You want teachers to feel like they're trusted and not just the feeling of trust, but none of us up here are in the classrooms every day, knowing the kids do a degree so we can adjust instruction to meet their needs. And that's what, that's what's going to drive in part mastery learning is differentiating for each student. And there's a whole bazillion ways that you can differentiate from assessment to instruction, everything. So, but there's got to be a balance and supporting our students with the curriculum and our teachers with the curriculum, it is a balance. But when you come from a good place where you're not trying to micromanage, I think those things can happen. I think there's always room for growth, but I'm excited when we talk about what's coming for this. Good things are coming. I want to see how those shake out. Could talk more about leadership development. You know, if you spend time developing a culture with shared values, you want those leaders to stay in the district and perpetuate that. And as they, you know, as they do what they do as leaders, and I'm thinking about like, as they continue to grow to make a difference in our district, we could do a whole session on brand identity, I think.
Below under looking ahead, what, creation of the hub? Is that something that's new?
Creation of the hub? It is something within Jack's area.
Yeah, it's a collection of curriculum resources towards the end of having greater consistency across the schools.
Okay.
So not just a resource, but then how do you implement it? So it's a support for teachers. It's an internal resource.
So like electronically, here's what you have and-
Like a cloud or something? They are full-
Yeah, yeah, it's computer-based. It's in the clouds, on the internal server.
So you started that a couple of years ago, didn't you? So it's got a name?
Yes.
Okay. And then what is, Jack, since you're, you've jumped in, focus on the K5 math instructional model. Are we, is that being completely revamped or is that something we're in the middle of?
Yeah, so right before the pandemic, we began work on creating a math framework for elementary math instruction, trying to model it after what we did with our reading framework. Again, towards the goal of greater consistency. And the pandemic did derail us a little bit, but the work has continued, just slowed down a lot. But we're trying to embrace one of the philosophies of math that we're trying to embed district-wide, starting in kindergarten, so that we're adequately meeting the rigor that we expect in the math standards.
We really have a drop-off in math, fifth grade or eighth grade?
Eighth is the indicator we've missed. And, you know, again, we've been, the last two years, it's been difficult to pinpoint it because of the gaps in state testing and those kind of things. And this has been an area of interest of mine, especially as a former high school math teacher in our total, in our math model. I could say that consistently across our elementary grades, K5, because we, and we developed this balanced literacy framework 20 years ago and implemented it at the, and when it came into the district in 0304, every elementary school had two literacy support teachers. Primary, because primary literacy instruction is different than where you're teaching kids how to read, is different than three through five literacy instruction, where kids now are reading for comprehension and what they have to do in those intermediate grades. As we grew and that model wasn't sustainable, we pulled back and we only have one literacy support teacher in each of the elementary schools now. But they work with the element, with the elementary teachers on their literacy instruction. And I can say very strongly that across the board, literacy instruction in all of our elementary schools is consistent, very similar, but we don't have that in math. And historically, if you ask most of our elementary teachers, what's their least favorite subject to teach? It's math. They became an elementary teacher because they didn't want to take the math to become a middle school or high school teacher. So, you know. So strengthening our math instruction. So one of the things we've been playing, when we've been, we've been planning in our long, kind of long-range planning is, it was, we've long believed we've needed math coaches, math instructional support coaches in our elementary schools and middle schools to make our, all of our instructors across the board better math instructors. Not that they're bad, because we do by and large hit the numbers, but we can do better in that area. It's been an unsustainable, it's something we'd never felt we could afford, quite honestly. With the ESSR money we're getting, we can use that money now to possibly fund those positions and believe that it could be sustainable for the future. So that's something we're looking at as part of the five-year staffing process, a five-year forecast process here coming up in the spring to see whether or not that is something we could sustain, because it would be an additional 16 positions across the district at the elementary level if we go that route. But again, we're so, we're so large that, you know, that's not even, even now, that's not a huge number anymore, fortunately or unfortunately, but-
Well, you're talking about one person for 700 kids.
But the person works directly with teachers. It doesn't necessarily work directly with, it's leveraging one person to make five fifth grade teachers and four fourth grade teachers and, you know, that person better.
So how many teachers in a, in a elementary building of 700 kids?
Twenty-eight, thirty-two.
If you just round numbers, five, 30, five- If, if you just round numbers, five, 30, five per grade level. Jack, 30?
Thirty.
And when do they start departmentalizing, fourth and fifth?
Typically.
So you're talking about working K through three, and then math teachers four and five? So probably 20-something teachers?
We're not saying it's going to be an easy job.
No, that's a lot. I mean, I'm excited to see that framework. What's your timeline on that, and the hub as well? Like, what's your timeline to say, this is running, we're now fine-tuning it?
We're definitely fine-tuning the hub at this point. It's, it's populated and it's being used. The math framework, I think we should be complete by next year. I'm sorry.
No, I'm probably making weird things as I'm thinking about what you're saying. So don't interpret those any way.
But as that's coming to fruition, it's kind of the opportune time to, to have those math coaches there to really implement it and ensure that it's done with fidelity. Love that word. But that's, that's really, I mean, and again, it's, you know, some of our elementary administrators are very good, were very good elementary teachers, who were very good elementary math instructors. They, that's not, it's, again, there's just, some of them have that area of expertise. Those of us who are high school people, you know, observing a science, chemistry lesson, or a Spanish lesson, when you're an English or math teacher is, you know, we're not all content specialists.
So staying in our lane is, I would just say it's a good thing, and I look forward to seeing what they come up with.
Is it, I recognize the importance of a good foundation in, in K to five especially, and getting people excited about it, and, and making sure that as they get up to middle school, they're not being left behind because, you know, because they're not comprehending or not as advanced as they need to be. But recognizing that we do have an issue as we get up to eighth grade, is there a reason we're stopping at K to five and not going K to eight?
We're looking at having the coaches at middle school as well. Currently, we've got kind of quasi-coaches at each middle school, where there are some teachers who are able to coach a few periods a day. So we'd like to make those full-time as well to continue it, so it is a K8 initiative ideally.
Senator, one of our large problems for eighth grade is the students sometimes take algebra in eighth grade, and then they don't get tested until high school. And so there almost needs to be like a refresher before OSTs?
So in eighth grade, students, if they're in algebra, they take the algebra test. And if they're in eighth grade math, they take the eighth grade math test.
Okay.
So whereas in every other grade level, the entire grade level is performing on a single math state test. At eighth grade, for us, we have half the kids in one test and half the kids in another test. So our issue is with the half of the students who are taking the eighth grade math course at eighth grade. And it's not a unique issue at Oral Tangi. It's, it's a state test issue as well. So it's certainly a target that we want to hit. But the way the standards are structured, when math verges, right, there's acceleration in math, some districts do it in sixth grade, some in seventh, we do it in eighth grade, every district sees the issue that we're seeing, just at different grade levels. I think we found that there's only four schools in the entire, not districts, but schools, in the entire state that met every indicator on the report card for middle school math. So everybody's experiencing an issue somewhere. Again, that doesn't mean that we can't, or will be hitting, that's our goal. But it is more than just an eighth grade math issue. It's, and that's where that hub comes in too. So rather than a teacher encountering a student with difficulty, and then perhaps Googling a, you know, instructional strategy, we want them going to the hub and finding something that's embedded and tested, and that aligns with the resources that we have in the district.
Right.
So the short version of that is, our eighth grade score for our district, and interrupt me if I'm going off track, our eighth grade score for our district is comprised of students who are not in the acceleration.
Correct.
Because we have eighth graders that take algebra, geometry, and algebra II.
Right. So our eighth graders that aren't accelerated, yeah, that's, I don't know if we can add value judgments, but I'm proud of their efforts. They're, they're, they're growing and, but it's, I don't think it's honest, intellectually honest to say that our eighth graders as a whole are doing, doing poorly. It's, it's just not accurate. What percentage of our eighth graders are accelerated?
About 50%.
Yeah.
Well, and that's all fine and well, but, but the, the last year, we had a full, full-blown testing. We missed the indicator by eight students. And, what?
That's it?
Eight. And, and that was the kind of straw that broke my back on it, because we'd used that accelerated issue as an excuse for a long time. And it is valid, but there were eight kids. We should, we needed to do a better job of identifying those eight kids, and getting those eight kids over the bar to meet the indicator. So we're, we, it's now to the point, we're done with excuses on it. We've got to hit this indicator.
I don't think it's an excuse, Superintendent Rafe, but I, you probably, you better not know this answer, but I would venture to say there's more than eight kids that didn't take the test. So it's important to understand how the numbers, eighth grade is a very unique year for math. The, the, fifth grade, you're not going to see those scores. So we're not suddenly doing awesome in four, five, six, seven, and then something magically happened in eighth grade. That magic is, it's, it's the acceleration part where you pull that out of the puzzle, out of the equation, I should say. So definitely not an excuse. Absolutely want to get better, but goodness gracious.
Well, and when we talk about it, it can't, the vision, or the, the, the story has to be how well we're doing in, in areas, and how, and where we need improvement. But if we're getting to the, you know, to our mission, the year is maximum learning for every student.
For sure.
Then that means every student. And, and that's, that's the goal that we're working at. So we shouldn't, you know, we're not going to be perfect in every area all the time, right? We can't expect and say we, we fail if we don't, if we don't hit perfection. But we darn sure better, you know, aspire to it. And that's, and that's where I think this work is coming from, right? I mean, everything that you're saying is, we're working hard to do it, and this is part of it. And if this is going to get us there, that's great. And if it doesn't, let's do something else. But, but it's where we have to be.
I think key for me is, we got to understand what, the, where the numbers are coming from, before we can have a vision of how to, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
We're coming up on the hour, so.
Well, I, I, I know. I want to make sure, I've heard a lot about elementary and middle in this conversation. Anything we want to talk about, that, those grades nine to 12?
Well, what is, what is being done with nine and 12? I mean, I know you have kids who are in algebra, calculus, you know, all those higher levels. So what is being done for those students who may be struggling in algebra in front, at their freshman year? Geometry, their second year or sophomore year?
Pre-cal.
Pre-cal. I mean, just all of them. Like, what resources are there? I know the hub, but what's there for those teachers who are working with those students to be able to help those who are struggling?
Well, at Liberty High School, I know they had, they instituted like after-school tutoring, where, where there's teachers that are staying after and helping kids. I think two days a week is math, and I think another couple of days are, it's English and history.
So then, let me rephrase that. What's happening across the district?
So, in, particularly with regards to math at the high school level, we developed courses for additional support in algebra, geometry, and algebra II. We call them double-block classes, so kids who need additional instruction get two periods of math instruction. And we typically co-teach those classes with an intervention specialist. So there's an, and the class isn't just all students with IEPs, it's, it's a blend of kids. Normal class size, 20, 25 kids typically in, in those classes. But they get two periods, it allows the teachers a lot of flexibility with an intervention specialist in there. When the state changed their math model, is algebra II required now, or, or equivalent for graduation? It was really important, because obviously it's a, a very difficult, algebra II is a very difficult class. And so, you know, that, that has been proven over time, and we've been doing that ever since I've been in the district, a, a good proven strategy to get our kids to a level of success with, with the state, with regards to the state testing, and with regards to just their overall math instruction. You know, it's one of those, it does cost us, because, you know, a teacher typically at the high school level teaches six classes. If they teach three double-block, they would teach us three classes, so half the students. So it's been some of the most powerful classes I've ever had the, the, the pleasure of observing. I always remember, the first time I observed it, I couldn't tell who was the math teacher and who was the intervention specialist, because there was a very, there was a very seamless instruction between those two teachers. I always, you know, and Jeanette Kenny, obviously, you know, she's our director of data and assessment, and she presents to, to, to the board frequently. I always, she was literally the best math teacher I've ever seen, because she taught double-block algebra, and she taught pre-calculus, which is probably the most difficult class in our high school curriculum. And she did them, she did like honors pre-cal. So, so it was just amazing to, to watch her teach. So those are the primary supports we have at, at a high school. Co-taught math classes in addition, so we're classes that we have an intervention specialist. If a student has math goals on an IEP, they're, they are in a co-taught math class with a highly qualified intervention specialist, somebody who's, you know, been trained to be a math teacher, or an English language arts teacher, that can, you know, highly qualified designation. So they're in, in those classes where they're, you know, better, better suited. So those are areas of, of, you know, how we support kids at the high school level. But overall, our high school achievement, I think, you know, I, I still remember this vividly, when I came in 2003, I, I kind of viewed our instructional model as a pay-it-forward, because we really invested a lot of resources at the elementary grades. And when I came from another district, I had kids in a high school level that needed a lot of remediation. And, and we invest so many, we were investing so many resources in the younger grades, in those early grades, to get kids on grade level, reading, and with their math, you know, level of, of ability in math. Because then, you know, in the other disciplines, they all carry, those skills carry forward into language arts, or social studies, and, and the sciences. You know, if you're not, can't read, you're not going to be successful in those other classes. So when I got here, I just noticed, we didn't have to do all this intense intervention. Now, we do have other intervention supports for high school, but it wasn't as intense as what I had in other districts, because our kids were on grade level or above. You know, you hand a kid with a seventh-grade reading level, an English textbook, or a, a socialized textbook that's written at a 12th-grade level, they're going to struggle. We, we don't see that problem by and large.
Anything else in this category? Okay, internal processes. We've touched on, on this in a few ways. We talked about, I think, branding and branding to values, and some of that, I think, may have some connection with internal processes as well.
I'm not going to go first, you guys can change it up.
Well, just to break the silence. So what, we do a really good job. I mean, a lot of this stuff is, we come in and we see how well things are running, right? And it, yeah, Mark, just to, to your point there, it's great to come into a place where you see things running well, right? You don't have to do a lot of remediation later, so that just prompts you to say, well, what can we do even better? We do a really nice job of developing people, and building them up, and, and starting to elevate them and all of that sort of stuff. When I think about talent retention and talent management, it's, it's what is the culture that they want to stay? Why, why do you want to stay here? What is it about this district that you're not just here to, to build your resume to go somewhere else? You're here to build your skills, to help give back to the district. One of the things that I opened by saying that I think mental health and supports are really important for our students, I think we need to focus on our employees, and, and what we've seen there. The challenges of the past couple of years, the challenges of the next couple of years, especially as we're growing, especially as we're seeing the burdens that growth puts on people over time, as we start to swell, and then we get a new building, and it alleviates some of that. But in the meantime, that's stress, and that's pressure. So how are we building a culture where it's clearly, and I think, I think we're already doing this, right, in a lot of ways, but how are we doing it so clearly that we, we show people that their, that their health, their wellness, their careers, their, their lives are important to us? That, that we are putting that first and foremost, because that's how we retain people, right? Anybody knows that an Oral Tangi teacher is working in a great environment, and, and they're going to be valued for that, and people are going to be interested in seeing our administrators and that, coming into their districts to support that. We retain them by showing that we care about them, right? And, you know, Randy sends out these weekly messages to people that are just beautiful to read, right? And it helps to do that, right? And it helps to show our values of those sorts of things. It's just, it's always working from that focus of, of your health and wellness, and your lives, and your careers are important to us, and, and how, that's how we're going to keep people. So that, to me, is essential.
Regarding the digital conversions, HR and finance are in sync now, right? So is that complete, and we can remove it?
Yeah.
The digital conversion, it's at the bottom of our operational excellence.
I, I mean, I think in terms of implementing the software, putting the tools in place, yes, they're complete. I think we've got some training to do. We've got some expertise to build back up within our departments, so that our teams feel that they can work effectively within that new software, right? They have, they're starting from scratch to build how they do things, what the processes now look like. So I think the, the software's there. Now we're at that, that learning phase and getting our growth in that. In terms of students and teachers, I think there's, you know, we've talked about the hub. I know our students do a lot within Schoology. I think our other members of the leadership team would have some more information on that. But we're also working with professional development and linking that in to the e-finance software for HR and finance as well. So we're trying to get as many modules connected. That may not seem, may not have intuitively sounded like a good connection, but it's helping us from departments and different aspects as well.
I'd say the forward-facing, the forward-facing stuff is what we did first, parent forms. So home books, teacher laptops, those things. But we still have at least another year's worth of work on the internal, like, in professional learning, which is our staff management software, and also we still have work to do with our enrollment for new student registration.
So I think this piece needs to evolve to more of, what's our technology strategy, period, right? So all the things we've done on the front end, but what's been the benefits of those investments? Are we getting more efficient? Are we able to scale up? What are we doing? And, you know, me personally, it's shifting our investments out of equipment into bandwidth and network, right? I don't like being in the equipment business, because equipment gets old and it gets stale. I'd rather create a very powerful, fast network that people can access on their personally-owned device, and then supply devices when necessary, but not all the time. You know, I think that's, that's, it'd be, you know, what's our cyber stance? How well-protected are we from potential issues? So I think a more broad, comprehensive technology strategy, both what we're doing internally, but then how are we driving and leveraging technology to make the classroom more efficient, to make the teacher shop more efficient, to get out of photocopying and printing, and into e-documents and e-delivery and things of that nature.
So I would take digital conversion in a different way. And we've maybe had informal conversations about this, but I think we have to have some sort of understanding of what it would take. Maybe we need to understand what the state can do to relax its prohibitions or how they herd, you know where I'm going with this, for an online learning option, K through five, K through eight. I just, there's so many students that that may be a better option for. Medically fragile students, just a whole bunch of different students that that might, I don't know how it works. Nine through twelve, when your classes are so, how do you do a lab online, right? I mean, you can do a reading class maybe online or a math instruction online and, and still do key components, but I don't know how you do science and, and all those things. So I, I don't know, and I don't have the answers. But I would love for our district to figure out what it would take to offer our parents. And I know there's state limitations, so this isn't an indictment of where we're at, but it's a challenge to see what it would take. And I know the other part of that is, is it's expensive. So I'd at least like to know the options. Because if we're talking ten, twenty, thirty years from now, it's hard to imagine delivering instruction that doesn't have some sort of online component.
I mean, we need to reflect a little bit. We stood up a five thousand student online learning academy in about a month.
Right.
Right, so it was pretty impressive to get that done. I mean, that's a small school district in the state of Ohio.
It's actually a very large. Every size school district in state of Ohio is about.
Eight hundred kids.
Yeah.
And don't get me wrong, the digital transformation's been a game changer, right? Instead of filling out a hundred forms, I can fill it out in one place and get everything. So it's been, I see a significant change to the parent experience. So the, the work we've done has been great, it's just how do we now take it to the next level?
Well, I think it's been a bit since we've updated our overall technology strategy that, and, you know, present time for presentation. I mean, our approach with devices and, and, you know, we've heard that comment before about not being in a device businesses, has been, you know, I've never taken the stance that we should be a one-to-one district because why am I going to buy a Chromebook for a kid who's got three at home? Or do they just keep taking them home on their own? Sorry, Dr. Weiss. The, but, you know, so it's, we've had to have a minimum level of technology available for state testing. And that's kind of been our, the bottom bar, so that's really where we've ta, we've started it. And maybe it's just us tweaking the word implement, because we have made significant progress in that implementation. So even if we come up with a different word for that, continue on that path.
Even digital conversion may be not the right word, right? I mean, I mean, to Kevin's point, the world is changing, right? And it sped up a lot with the pandemic as we realized what we could do. But, you know, three, five, ten years down, you know, I mean iPhones are only what, ten, twelve, fifteen years old, right? I mean, the world is changing quickly. And as we are becoming one of, we are one of, but as we're becoming one of the largest school districts in the state, we're already a premier school district in the state. Being forward-thinking about what technology means, and part of it's maybe, you know, it's, it's, it's talking to the legislature about it. And maybe that's part of our strategy too, is being more assertive about what's important to us as a district. Because of our stature, we hold a little bit more heft. But school is going to look dramatically different from when any of us were in school. It already does, and it's going to look even more dramatically different over the next ten years. And if we're not on the edge of that, we're going to be missing out.
I just don't want to take what the state says we can or can't do. I mean, I would press them. I would press them.
It's interesting that we, we did something back in two thousand and ten called Project Twenty Twenty, tried to envision what school would look like in twenty twenty and how vastly different. But aside from having a Chromebook in front of the kids, what we found over the last twelve years is people still want their children in front of our teachers by and large. And so I don't know if it is going to be that much different. It may, some of the delivery may be different, but that personal experience of learning from a person and, and being in that caring environment and, you know. What our parents found out with the pandemic was, teaching was really hard. One of the best comments that my wife heard was, early on in the pandemic, she said, when a parent said to her, hey, the last report card you put on for my child that they're a pleasure to have in class, you lied.
I would be curious, when parent surveys go out, how many parents would not be interested in, but would just be, I mean, whether it's short-term, if there's an illness, or long-term, to be curious how many parents would want that option? And it's, I agree, the kid's got to be face-to-face, you've got to be able to read non-verbal communications. It's not.
And we are, we're able to do those, those things when they happen, just not, again, we'd have to discuss that, the scaling of it. But, you know, in those cases, we provide home instruction or we provide, you know, those resources. And we taught, we've, we've worked at, we've, we've done this in the past where we developed our own kind of, we, we use a pro, a product called Apex to deliver some online, we purchase classes. But we've looked at developing our own, where our, our own all tangy teachers develop the class and then here it is, and it's more self-guided, self-paced, so we're still working on some of those.
Yeah, I'd like to see what those conversations look like.
I think that just opens up another door for online and standardization. I mean, you'd have to, I mean, online is my world, so that standardization makes a big difference.
Okay.
How'd we do on your hour?
Fifteen minutes old?
I hope we're going to do sixty to ninety. What haven't we talked about?
I've covered the topics I wanted to cover.
This is, this is as good of a meeting as I've ever been a part of, so I feel really good.
Maybe I'd flip it the other way. Is there specific issues that the administration would like some more context on? Look the script on you guys.
I was just saying, it's probably something we need to be able to digest in our process tomorrow. And then to be able to come back to you and kind of cross-section of ideas if there is, what would you want the direction for us to take? We'll absorb this work from tonight with Dr. Weiss's help and then be able to, I think, circle back with that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we had, we had our central office, Emily and I do these updates to the staff all throughout the district. And today we kind of did our last one with central office and, and kind of was just thinking in terms of this. And I said to the group here, because the central office people are typically the most underappreciated. They don't get the day-to-day building love of, you know, the good stuff from the kids and the parents that, that our people in our building get. And tried to emphasize to them how, and, but I just was so, I stood there and was so impressed, you know, I looked at our food service director. We, we haven't had one supply chain issue with, with food service, and other districts have had so many of those. And transportation, where other districts have had to shut down. Or the, the one person we have who gets all of our subs assigned and, and coordinated, who, who, who got, you know, got us to the point of never having to shut down because we didn't have subs. Or, you know, the communications team and the technology team and the things that we were, have accomplished in the last two years throughout the pandemic, that we just have so many great people working here. You know, doing IEPs in a pandemic area, doing, I mean, just thing, one thing after another. I just couldn't, you know, stop coming up with compliments. And, and I, and I also shared with them the, the fact that the community, you know, supports us continuously at the ballot, but then, you know, the, the electing board members and the five of you that I tried to reemphasize for our staff, the, the importance of your support of the work they're doing, being true champions of public education. You know, that, that, that's what makes this all work. And it's interesting, Elaine Eddy popped in, and she started walking around the building and nobody was at their stations. She got, she thought we were being held captive and we're locked. She got nervous, and this was like the last place she looks, and she found all of us, you know, a hundred people in this room. And, and, but that partnership that we have with the associations about just, you know, that makes it really all work so well together. That, you know, this just made for a great end of the day, so thank you.
Do you feel like the board should have a larger role in celebrating some accomplishments? Because, I mean, we depend on you to tell us, we're not in the buildings.
Right.
And, you know, I, one of my favorite things to do pre-pandemic was to go to buildings and celebrate some of their accomplishments or programs that they had implemented. I loved doing that, I loved going to the buildings. But, you know, so we've talked about what we need, the direction that we need to give you, but what about the direction we need?
I think that's a great, great point, and you've talked a little bit about that with the conclusion of, or the revision of the strategic plan. But I think you bring up an excellent point. Yeah, our culture, one of our culture things is that we can always do better, so we always work hard. We don't pause oftentimes to celebrate. We wish to celebrate those accomplishments and highlight the good things that are going on. So I don't know the answer to that question.
And maybe I just, what came to me was maybe it's an additional layer of our communication strategy. Like I send out the board recap after every meeting, and maybe we start thinking about messaging, you know, a message from the board president or a message from specific board members or those kind of things to, you know, how we message that, like, you know. You have your board president's report, but maybe that's another type of message we send out or push out. Or you, you know, as you guys use your social media accounts, you know, you're sharing our information, but also sharing those kind of things.
I think Mr. Lester's initiation and leadership with the Zoom things that he started as something that we need to, we need to figure out how to get that on the calendar about every month or so at least. Because it gives people an opportunity to be heard that's longer than three minutes. And it gives, you know, I think the first couple that you, you did, Mr. Lester, it was probably fifty-eight minutes of listening and two minutes of talking, really. So I think that's something that we need to figure out how to get time to listen to people.
With internally and externally, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's finding, because I think, Mark, your point is really well taken. And it, it should never be seen as we're just here to come in and make some decisions and then we leave, right? I mean, we are invested in this district's success, and that needs to be felt. And whatever we can do to, to make that message felt, not just we as people, but we as the entity that's shaping, that's helping to shape the district, that those things are important to us, and that their success is important to us, and that we, we hear what's important there and we recognize it, and we're going to be using that to help, to help get there. I think it is just exceedingly important. So anything that we can do, and we, we personally need to be proactive in thinking about that. But, but any support that you guys can give in, in helping us find ways to do that is great. I would love to do the same thing that you were talking about.
Yeah, I think that, that's important, but then, you know, I have heard a lot of parental comment that, you know, they want the board to hear their point of view, and they only have a, you know, a limited amount of time. But then I, I attended several of our town hall meetings and the turnout's very low. So I know there's a new coffee chat strategy, so, you know, they're always looking for new ways. But I think there's a general miss, like, again, this is an educational component, that people don't understand, you talk to the board about this, but the board, none of us are in a building.
Right.
We're not, we're not in the weeds of operations. So when they come here, and I feel like I get caught with my pants down, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know what's happening in that building, I'm not quite sure who the vice principal is, and who's the English teacher that suggested that book, you know. So I feel like to have those types of conversations, and I don't know how your online Zooms have went, but the right people have to be in the room.
Right.
Because I can't, we as board members, we can't necessarily speak to the problem on the sports team or the problem in the English class. And I think that's just, maybe we haven't done a great job of communicating. You know, you need to start at the building level, and then once that's done, and you escalated it, then, then maybe we can get involved. But, you know, I have, I, I try to go to a town hall meeting if I can, but they have, they have a structure. So I don't know what the venue would be for people to have conversation felt heard without us violating sunshine laws and.
Well, it's, oh, sorry, the, the, you know, it's one thing to talk about day-to-day operations issues. Usually right, none of us are doing that, right? And so, you know, I, I'm sure we've all gotten questions about, you know, so-and-so, some teacher said this, and, and we always say, go talk to the teacher.
Right.
We're not, we're not, it, it, one, doesn't make any sense because we don't have the, the context of it. But two, what good does that do to have the board jump in and, and start micromanaging something? It makes no sense whatsoever. It goes to the operations governance thing that you were talking about to begin with. So, you know, when we have conversations with the community, it ought to be at that higher level of what are, what are our values, what are our interests, what are the things that we're going to be using to, to achieve that governance function? And maybe there's a discrete issue that we understand, we can talk about, you know, that is maybe not an individual thing, but it's a broader thing. How we, you know, the, the curriculum questions that we've gotten and how that comes in more broadly and what's our strategy about that. But it always has to be at that higher level. It can never just be, oh, we're here to fix your individual issue, right? I mean, that, that just doesn't make sense.
But maybe some of the surveys that come out, we could have a little bit of input to help people feel as though their voice was heard.
Right.
We, you know, we need to do a good job of taking notes about comments that we're getting and then possibly, you know, like Kevin had mentioned, online. Now, the state's kind of tied our hands on us being able to have an online platform. We have to have a separate school district, but that might not always be the case. And what is the interest in that? Just one example.
Right. All right, Dr. Weiss, bring us home.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you some general themes that I heard. First of all, awesome discussion, so thank you, great thinkers, this was, this was awesome. People, values, excellence, transparency. I wrote structured flexibility, listen, communicate, as sort of some high-level themes. You hearing those, is, feel like I missed any of the high-level themes?
Continued growth.
Growth, thank you.
Did you mention struc, us technologies, strategy?
Well, I, 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 yeah, I was sort of seeing that as like a, like, under, yeah, I'll make sure I write it. How about that?
Improvement and growth, I mean, I kind of look at those together. I, I, I hope that's how you heard it.
Perfect.
And responsibility. I think responsibility goes a long way toward both our fiscal, but also the, just how we're, we're managing people, how we're engaging with the community, responsibility is, is big.
Great. You all are great thinkers. You made my job tonight very, very easy. I'm going to type up my thought, type up your thoughts and use these tomorrow when we work, when I work with the leadership team. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a great night.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all.
All right, so I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Second, please. Any discussion on adjournment? Nope. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dobrikow?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're back together on April fourteenth, is that right? With a regular working session.
This Thursday, the candidate night.
April seventh.
Big deal.
Liberty High School, right?
Yeah.